All right. Uh, the, are we, is SPTV or whoever, are we ready? Okay. The special meeting of the board is now called to order at 4:32 PM on March 13th. Please note that the public portion of today's meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puja Sound Coast Salish people. For the record, I'll call the roll. Director Briggs.
Present.
Director Hershey.
Here.
Vice President Sergio.
Pre-
Director Top.
Here.
And this is President Rankin. Uh, we just learned of a, this is off-topic, but we just, moments ago, learned of the, gun violence impacting one of our students again. Today, outside of school, across the street, a Garfield student was the victim of gun violence and is at Harborview. It feels pretty crappy to say that and continue on. And it also felt wrong not to say anything. The, inside or out of our schools, the impact of gun violence on our kids and families is just an absolutely unacceptable state of reality. And, um, I know that the board and superintendent and staff are committed to doing everything that we can, and we're also very limited in what our reach is. We can secure our school buildings, we can have places for students to report things, we can, you know, take threats very seriously and intervene as appropriate, but we can't be at a bus stop, we can't be at a baseball game, we can't be, you know, and, but, but members of our community are in all of those places, and we all together are responsible for creating the environment in our city where our kids are safe. I just, yeah. Hug your kids, if you have guns, please, please securely store them. Okay. We have two topics to cover today. We will hold an executive session, and then we'll publicly vote on finalists for the Director District Two position. Then we'll probably take a short break and move to the work session there for a discussion on our board engagement. So, as we discussed at the last meeting, we're moving forward with the four applicants for the Director District Four position. We're using the same evaluation criteria that we have developed for our own use as we evaluate candidates, we'll use those with, uh, the District Four candidates and throughout the process, uh, that criteria that we developed and are using to determine our District Two finalists today. So, we'll begin an executive session and then return to the public session to select four finalists, uh, for consideration for the appointment to Director District Two. At the end of today, we'll have a total of eight candidates, four for District Four, four for District Two. If we need to during voting, we can go back for additional executive sessions, but for now, we're gonna plan to have one, come back, vote, and if we need to at any time, we can step over there. I, uh, General Counsel Greg Narver, would you please, um, ground us with reminders on, uh, where our conversation can and can't go in executive session? Please.
Happy to. Good afternoon, Greg Narver, General Counsel. The statute on executive sessions authorizes the board to go into executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. You are allowed to go back and meet privately to discuss the applicants you have and your opinions about their qualifications and have a robust discussion about that. However, actions, decisions, votes cannot be taken in executive session, that's why you'll be returning to the public meeting for the formal process of deciding how, uh, how you're gonna get down to your list of four finalists. The discussion in executive session, though, can cover all of, all of your opinions about the applicants and discuss their qualifications, pros and cons, however, the actual process of arriving at four finalists needs to take place out here in public.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we go do that?
Yeah, so, just a question of like, what will the process look like when we come back and we try to like narrow it down? Are we just gonna go like applicant by applicant? Are we gonna do nominations? Just for clarity?
So, Ms. Wilson Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that the meeting was noticed, I think I have to do that after we come back out, or can I go to that part now? Just in, in the talking points, it's the next, yeah.
I'm happy to present the question.
Have a process all worked out. It's in the talking points to cover after you return from executive session, but there's nothing, no reason you can't go through it now if you, if you'd like to.
Okay.
It's your call.
So, when we come back, uh, oh, okay, I was gonna say when we come back, we can do. Yeah, let's do it when we come back, if that's okay. Thank you. Okay. So, the board is now immediately recessing into an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of candidates for appointment to elective office per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1H in parentheses, I don't know why I said that as a, it's in parentheses. The session is scheduled for 30 minutes, which brings us to an anticipated end time of 5:10 PM. If while we're in there, we need more time, I will come back out and notice that before we continue. So, directors, please join me now in the conference room. We will return.
Okay. So because we announced the executive session, it was lasting until 5:10 and it's 5:08. We have two minutes before we can call back the meeting officially. All right. The board has recessed out of executive session and the special meeting of the board is now reconvened at 5:10 PM. As noted at the top of the meeting, directors have evaluated the District Four applications. Because of that number, we will move forward with all four applicants for that position. The board will now move into our action item for today, selection of final candidates for the appointment to Director District Two. We currently have 11 candidates and we are narrowing to four. Before we get started on the voting process, I want to say a genuine and huge thank you to all of the applicants for the districts two and four positions. We didn't expect to be appointing two vacancies amidst an already very busy time for our district. And it was really encouraging and heartening and we're just grateful to have had the opportunity to consider appointments from such a large qualified group of candidates. And so, thank you for putting your names in and being willing to step into this. Okay. So, we will be eventually appointing just one director to each of the two open positions. But I do want to, on behalf of the board and superintendent, invite all of our applicants to continue working to ensure excellent outcomes for our students. And we thank you all for your commitment to the success of our students and to our school district. So, we will be using a voting process to determine our four candidates for District Two that we discussed and agreed to during a public work session held by the board March 6th. That process will go as follows. We'll be voting in rounds and we'll conclude our voting once we have identified four finalists for District Two. For the first round, directors will each nominate four candidates they wish to recommend as finalists. As they state their nominations, if you wish to, you can share why you are nominating those candidates. You don't have to, but that is your opportunity to do so. As we are making nominations, they will be recorded on, for directors, the screen in front of us. And for the auditorium, that big screen and people at home should be able to see it on Teams or whatever streaming they're using. As soon as we have gone down the line and everyone has nominated their four, any candidate who did not receive any nominations will be removed from the screen. If the first round, we all cast the same four candidates, then that is our finalist list and we are done. If there are more than four total, we will continue with additional rounds. In the second round, directors will each nominate three candidates. And those will again be recorded. Anyone from the smaller pool will again be removed from consideration for the next round. Again, if we end up with four after that round, we're done. If we have more than four, we'll do another round where we nominate two each. And then if we have to, we'll re-nominate one each. Throughout these rounds that we're about to embark on, additional deliberation and evaluation of candidates may be needed. If our nominations overlap, so we collectively nominate fewer than four candidates in any round, which wouldn't be the first one, but possibly the second one, we would need to pause and discuss and determine if we want to add back in a fourth or if we want to go with three. We can return to executive session to evaluate qualifications of the candidates at any point needed. But our voting will all take place here publicly. So for each round of nominations, the order in which directors state their nominations will alternate from one end of the dais to the other. We flipped a coin to determine which end we were going to start on. We're going to start on this end with Director Top. And then, once we get to four candidates, I will ask Vice President Sargiu to put a motion before us to vote to confirm our four candidates. Does that all track? Okay. So we will begin now with our first round, beginning with Director Top, then going this way. Please speak to the four candidates you recommend to be nominated.
Thank you, President Rankin. I appreciated learning about all of the candidates and watching their video statements. You know, this is a large commitment and a volunteer commitment and it was really great to see so many folks apply. I don't have a lot to say about the candidates, but I will list my four. Kelly Luznia is my first one, then Sarah Clark, then Carol Thompson, and last, Sean Sullivan.
I'm sorry, we have, the computer decided to freeze in this moment, so I am going to work on, if we could pause and then have you reread those in a moment when I get this figured out.
This moment, can we wish Brent a happy birthday?
Oh, oh, that's a good idea. Okay, while we're waiting for our technology to catch up, we have a moment of celebration, and he's not necessarily expecting this, but it is our superintendent, Dr. Brent Jones's birthday today. Happy, happy birthday. Thank you for spending it with us.
We're glad you were born.
He's 39.
I remember one year when my mom was a teenager and it was her birthday and she suddenly... No, sorry, when I was a teenager, when my mom suddenly realized that she was a year younger than she thought, she was like, "Oh, my gosh, wait." Like, she just, she gained an extra, she got an extra year because she had been thinking for the whole year she was already one age.
I think the computer has woken up. So I'm ready to record those votes, apologies.
Okay, cool. I was going to suggest we get like a giant piece of paper or something, but that's, this is better.
So Kelly Luznia, Sarah Clark, Carol Thompson, and Sean Sullivan.
All right. I, this is going to sound so like, whatever. I really wish that we could pick more people. And it was really, you know, going into this process, my biggest fear was that we would not have any candidates. And we would have to figure out what we were going to do. So to have the difficult choice of narrowing down from some really great options is, I guess, better than not having none, but it's still, you know, a bummer. So my four, I think in alphabetical order by last name. Sarah Clark, Danielle Gall, Ramona Hatendorf, and Sean Sullivan.
I didn't do alphabetical order. I just did a random assortment. But I just want to comment. It takes a lot of courage to sit in front of a video camera when you're not a public speaker and try to articulate and form something that is coherent and impressive. Not all of us are possessed with those skills and possessed. Possess those skills. Cypress, I see you. Anyway, that's one of my kids over there. So I just, I want to put that on the table because it's clear that people are invested in this process. And so, whatever the outcome is, just know that we noticed, right? We read your applications, we looked at your videos, and we noticed. And we appreciate you putting your name in the hat. So my four people are, and not in alphabetical order, and I don't have the last names written down here, so I'm, you'll, hopefully Ellie will be able to decipher. It's Sarah, Carol, Danielle, and Sean. Do you need me to look up the last names?
Got Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, and to the candidates, apologies for our name pronunciations, Sean Sullivan and Carol Thompson. Is that right?
Did you have Danielle Gahl?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I will spare you my platitudes, but just know that this is hard, having gone through it, and being on the other end of it for the second-ish time. But my selections are Clark, Sullivan, Luznia, and Thompson.
I've got Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, Sean Sullivan, Carol Thompson.
I'm going to read these back just real quick in case anybody's having, they're little tiny Xs on the screen, I just want to make sure I've got it accurately. So Director Briggs, I have Clark, Gahl, Sullivan, and Thompson. Director Hersi, I have Clark, Luznia, Sullivan, and Thompson. Director Sargiu, I have Clark, Gahl, Sullivan, I'm sorry, Clark, Gahl, yes, Sullivan, Thompson. Rankin, Clark, Gahl, Hatendorf, Sullivan, and Top, I have Clark, Luznia, Sullivan, Thompson. So the candidates that will continue on for the second round of nominations will be Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, Ramona Hatendorf, Kelly Luznia, Sean Sullivan, and Carol Thompson. And I will prepare that table, so you can pause or whatever President Rankin wants you to do in the meantime.
Okay, so that's a total of how many people? Six. Six people, okay. Do directors want to exec session again, or pick three from the remaining six, this time starting at that end going this way?
I thought we were picking four. We're, but we're, now we're each going to name our top three. And I'm fine to do that without going into executive session personally.
Okay. So when the table is ready, Director Briggs, we'll start with you naming three.
So the candidates that are nominee, or potential nominees for this round are Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, Ramona Hatendorf, Kelly Luznia, Sean Sullivan, and Carol Thompson. And if anybody thinks they nominated somebody else in the last round, please let me know.
Okay, we're ready to go. All right, my top three, Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, Sean Sullivan.
Okay, my top three are Sarah Clark, Sean Sullivan, Carol Thompson.
So from this list, I'm choosing three, correct? Yeah, because I've already chosen four. Okay. Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, and Sean Sullivan.
I'm sorry about this. Luznia, Clark, Thompson. And to exec, yeah.
So I have the candidates continuing on being Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, Ramona Hatendorf, Kelly Luznia, Sean Sullivan, Carol Thompson, which, spoiler alert, is everybody on the screen. Does that sound right? Did everybody cast, okay.
Yep.
I'm going to prepare for the next round, which you'll be casting two nominations.
Yeah, so we could go to executive if we need to, or we could, we could each pick two. And this time, we'll start on this end. Sorry, it's possible we'll, we could end up with three.
That's okay.
In which case, we could either talk about adding one, or we could just say we have three.
Then we could go back and see out of the two.
Okay. So Sarah Clark and Carol Thompson.
Clark and Gahl.
Sarah and Danielle.
Clark and Sullivan.
So what happened? You got four?
That's four.
Okay, well, what are the four?
So after that round, the four candidates who have been nominated are Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, Sean Sullivan, and Carol Thompson.
Okay.
If that tracks with what everybody stated, we don't have anything else to talk about, I would ask our Vice President for a motion to name our, our candidates for the District Two seat.
Okay, can I just read from the screen? Okay, because I don't have it written down yet. I move approval of the candidates Sarah Clark, Danielle Gahl, hopefully we're saying that person's name right, Sean Sullivan, and Carol Thompson as the four finalists for the position of District Two Board Director.
I second the motion.
This has been, the acceptance of these four names as our candidates has been moved by Vice President Sargiu and seconded by Director Briggs. Ms. Wilson-Jones, the roll call, please.
I don't have my fancy sheet today, so it's just going to be, in order, ending with the precedent. Director Briggs?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Vice President Sargiu?
Yeah, aye.
Director Top?
Aye.
And President Rankin?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, directors, and thank you again to all of the candidates. The next step in the process will be the, for the Board Forum for the four named nominees for District Two and the four candidates for District Four will be on March 27th at Lincoln High School. The forum will be open to the public, and more information will be provided on our Board website soon. It is 5:30. We're going to move into a work session on the Board's Community Engagement. Before we do that, would directors like a five? Okay. So let's start the work session at 5:35. Thank you. All right, I'll just take your time getting settled, and I'm just going to start with So we are now moving into a work session on Board Community Engagement. One of our responsibilities as representatives of the public on the Board are to engage in engagement with, with the community and to engage in two-way community, two-way engagement with, between the Board and the community. We, you know, are responsible for providing direction to our one employee, the Superintendent, based upon the vision and values of the, the entire community of Seattle Public Schools. And so, we are responsible for determining vision and values. What does the community want students to know and be able to do? What are our expectations for the outcomes of anybody coming through our system? So what are our goals about what we, about student outcomes, and then what values are held by our community for how our system makes progress on those goals? So another part of our role is to build understanding of the role of the Board and promote good governance, to communicate progress towards the goals, and monitor guardrails. As, and the Board, something that is why we're having this discussion and why we had the work of the Ad-Hoc Community Engagement Committee, is that it's very, very easy for Board members in, on any Board to get pulled into engaging on operational or school-level issues, individual things that flare up. And our responsibility is really to provide the clear direction on behalf of the entire community about the vision and values. And when we don't do that, nobody else steps in and takes that, that responsibility. So in our adopted framework, Student Outcomes Focused Governance, it's referred to as owner issues versus customer issues. Our owners are the entire Seattle community. We are elected to represent the entire Seattle community as representing the public that owns this public system. And owners can be customers also, customers can be owners, they're sometimes one or the other. Customer issues, I don't love that term, but it's essentially the people who are closer to the point of service. And that, under our framework, is the responsibility of the Superintendent and staff. How is that service being? and promote good governance, to communicate progress towards the goals and monitor guardrails. As, and the, the board, something that is why we're having this discussion and why we had the work of the AdHoc Community Engagement Committee, is that it's very, very easy for board members, on, on any board, to get pulled into engaging on operational or school level issues, individual things that flare up. And our responsibility is really to provide the clear direction on behalf of the entire community about the vision and values. And when we don't do that, nobody else steps in and takes that, that responsibility. So in our adopted framework, Student Outcomes Focused Governance, it's referred to as owner issues versus customer issues. Our owners are the entire Seattle community. We are elected to represent the entire Seattle community as representing the, the public that owns this public system. And owners can be customers also, customers can be owners, they're sometimes one or the other. Customer issues, I don't love that term, but it's essentially the people who are closer to the point of service. And that, under our framework, is the responsibility of the superintendent and staff. How is that service being provided? How is our system responsive to the needs of individual students and families? Our responsibility is being very clear about the outcomes that are expected on behalf of the community and monitoring the progress that the district makes in meeting those expectations. So we've got a bunch of things to support, can I reason the right talking points? Yes, this, this work and this conversation. We have, sorry, I'm getting, getting the, that's, that's from what we just did. Okay. Community engagement is something that we have talked a lot about and people say a lot and don't always mean the same thing. And so where we are in our work is that we have, in the meeting materials, we have the sort of, it's not a one pager, because it's more than one page, but general guidance about two-way engagement at the board level. We have recommendations that were created by the AdHoc Governance Committee and accepted by the full board. And then we also have the work of the AdHoc Community Engagement Committee. So we have lots of pieces, lots of resources, lots of background. And why I wanted us to have this work session is so we could do some things. We have, we have, we have done this study, we've made these recommendations, what do we want to do with them as a, as a board? Both in the larger picture, thinking in terms of a policy about the board's engagement with the community. And also in the much nearer term is we have a strategic plan that is ending. And we need to, as a board, provide the goals and guardrails to provide direction to the superintendent on the next strategic plan. And we need to do that in pretty short order to provide the time needed to ramp up those, you know, receive the strategic plan and whatnot. So the, sorry. So today, what we want to talk about is what is the state right now? What is our desired state in the bigger picture? And then how do we want to approach engagement on the immediate next goals and guardrails? So in the spring of 2023, then-President Hersi convened an AdHoc Community Engagement Committee to establish, to do some background work and establish a structure for two-way engagement and develop resources to support that engagement. Director Hersi chaired that committee. And the other two members of that committee are no longer on the board. So I asked Director Hersi to give, you know, those of us who are new to the board and those of us who weren't on the committee, an overview of what the outcome of that was. So please go ahead.
Oh, cool, right on, thank you. Is, can we put the, I think we had slides, right?
Am I tripping?
No, okay, cool, right on. So I had the honor of chairing the AdHoc Community Engagement Committee as we, or rather, as was just mentioned by Director Rankin. And in order to kind of understand the magnitude of the work that we put before us and where we still have to go, we kind of have to back up a little bit, that to a sentiment that I think predates all of us and essentially exists for many, if not all, school districts across the country. What and how do we do or is community engagement, right? Because we get feedback all the time when a measure or an action is going through. We will have individuals that will come and they will say, "You did not do community engagement because you did not talk to me," or "You did not talk to X group," right? And in many ways, they are right, and in also many ways, they are wrong. The problem, though, there is that our right as a board, or as an individual board director, does not supersede their right, right, as a community member. Let me explain what that means. If you do not have a shared definition of what community engagement is, in the absence of that, when a person comes to you and says, "Oh, community engagement was not done because I was not consulted," they, in and of itself, are correct, right, to their definition. For us, when we hear that, it's like, okay, well, we did community engagement. We engaged with community members who we typically engage with, right? Or we did some type of process, our right, or what our vision of right is, is also correct. And so really, as an educator, by training and a policy person, what I wanted to do with this committee particularly was really get at the root of the problem. What is our definition of community engagement? And Student Outcomes Focused Governance does a really good job of outlining what it believes is a really solid way to look at community engagement and give it some parameters on what it is and what it isn't. And then how do we fit those parameters, along with other things that are important to us as Seattle Public Schools, into a model that accomplishes a couple of things? That gives us the opportunity to achieve engagement in teams, right? So that we're not siloing information and there's not one director that is responsible for an entire engagement. That allows that communication that happens at that engagement to be two-way. And for those of you who are listening at home, the difference between two-way communication and one-way communication is, for example, if you're coming to give public comment, that's one-way communication. Because we don't have an opportunity to respond in real time with you, it's not a conversation. Two-way engagement would be a sense where you and I are sitting at a table discussing an issue, having a conversation. There is a give and a take that happens on both sides of the table. As well as is predictable, consistent, and is accessible. And those things are all kind of rolled into one, and what that means to me is calendaring, right? So if you take a step, or rather, if you look at that for Seattle Public Schools and you take a step back from there, we oftentimes are in a reactive state as opposed to a proactive state. There are oftentimes building issues, there are oftentimes policy issues, there are oftentimes fires, whatever your word or verb might be, that come to us. And the first time that we're hearing of it is the day of, maybe via email, or for the first time from the diastereum public comment. The problem with that is that we then put board directors, and this has happened again, let me reiterate, has been happening for decades. It then puts board directors in a solution heightened cortisol state of being. Because what they're doing is trying to fix a problem as like any elected official worth their salt would try to do. But if you have a room full of 60 people who are rightfully so infuriated about some particular thing, you're not in a position to where you're making your best judgment calls as you navigate those processes. Another problem is that when those types of things happen, the harm has often already been done, right? And the impact that a board, let alone a singular board director, might have on that problem is like miniscule, if not null. So one of the critical things that came out of this was a large desire to have a multi-year work plan. And thanks largely to the work of Ellie, Julia, others in the board office, but really all of Superintendent Jones's team, especially for like him giving the go-ahead to do this, is that for the first time, we have a work plan that spans out a year, right? There are a couple of reasons that that was a request that came from Community Engagement Committee and why that is so critical. In order to be less reactive and more proactive, we, the board and community, need to have a shared document about, that is paving the way for what is taking place. So now that we have this work plan, we can look at that work plan and see, okay, these are all the things that happen on a cyclical basis that we can decide as a board, through whatever fashion, whether it be a, you know, work session like we're doing tonight or a retreat, we can say, yo, based on what I know, this is going to be something that we want to get some feedback from the community on as early as possible. So as we are taking next steps, I'm really hoping that we are going to utilize that work plan as a roadmap and backward plan, again, coming at this from an educator's lens, our engagement to get the information we need ahead of time. And it will give community an opportunity to know when critical decisions are being made. Because another thing that we're trying to provide is predictability and access. And I really do believe that, that annual work plan is, is a critical piece to that. Ideally, we will be able to have that for two years out, that's a hard thing to do. There's a lot of things that we're going to be responsible for over the course of two years, so we're starting with one. But just imagine the, the overall vision, and we're very clearly not there yet. The overall vision is to imagine a board member being able to come into the role, either being re-elected or elected for the first time, and being able to sit down and see, okay, for the next two years, these are all the, the major things that we already know about, right? Because some things we do, contracts, voting on specific things like transportation service standards, X, Y, and Z, you name it. There are some things that we do on a regular basis that we can predict. Okay, so that's part number one. The other piece that we really wanted to sit down and kind of work on is figuring out what is a structure for a community engagement opportunity that supports all of the themes and things that are really important to SOFG and to proper community engagement? That also builds in an accessible schedule for a board director, right? And that is a shared opportunity. When I first came into the board, the way that we've always done it, now let me be very clear, there's nothing wrong with this model, but I believe that we can do better is that an individual board director, based on where they live in the city, might reserve a library conference room or like post up at a coffee shop and hold office hours. That is a very, and I repeat, very inequitable way to conduct community engagement. Let me be very clear, that's not wrong, it's not bad, but it is inequitable. And let me explain to you why. Depending on the type of meeting that you're trying to have and what your personal, like, lives entail. Some of us work full-time jobs, some of us do not. Some of us have, or live in households that have two cars and can get easily to places, some of us do not. Some of us have children that are very, have very demanding schedules, some of us do not. And so when you think about building in community engagement in a time that works for a board director, is not necessarily a community engagement opportunity that is going to be predictable or accessible for community members, especially those who are the families or have the interest of students furthered us away from educational justice in mind. And if we're thinking about like some of the things that we've learned from the pandemic, doing things in person, doing things virtually, or having opportunities for passive communication are also valid ways to think about how do we want to engage with community. And I also think that we have a very limited view of what and who community are as a board of directors. Because when we think community engagement, or at least this is true for me initially, when we were, before we went into this process, I think of parents and families. Like, that is the vision that pops into my head, those library meetings. And I think that we exclude students too often from that. Not intentionally, but like if we're really thinking about, okay, who's going to show up to a library on a Saturday? It's not going to be a high schooler, and it's not going to be an elementary student who's seeking out that opportunity on their own, right? They're limited to like, you know, are their parents even able to bring them? They have full, like, educational schedules, and we're asking them to come to a library on a Saturday, you know what I'm saying? On top of that, we represent the entire city. So if I am limiting myself to engagement in southeast Seattle, then that doesn't necessarily provide access to folks who I represent on the north end of the city and vice versa. If you are exclusively holding your community engagement opportunities in your district, you are effectively utilizing only a small portion of resource that is available to you to engage with community. So as we think about how we want to move forward in an ideal model for community engagement, there are a couple of things that really came up within the conversations that we had. And even though Director Sargiu was not officially on the committee, she did join us for probably 75% of the meetings and was a very critical part of going through this. So Michelle, if there's anything that I'm missing, hop in. Don't worry, I got you, I'm always going to correct the record in your favor. So that being said, what we came up with was a cadence, and this is ambitious, right? Of one community engagement event a month for an opportunity for three board directors within OPMA, that's not true right now, but soon it will be, to conduct community engagement to where they are rotating outside of their districts as well, right? As well as utilizing our strategic plan and our goals to, if there are other, like, opportunities to schedule additional meetings, like, we want to be going to where there is a high concentration, high population of students who we have, you know, focused on our strategic plan. Those further from educational justice, black boys and their families. What we also want to do by specifically doing so in teams is a level of accountability. Because I want to be super real with you, when I first started this and I was doing the library model, I'm just going to call it the library model from now on. I would almost always bring my wife with me as a note taker. Because it is impossible to engage with a room of 30 people and take incredibly accurate notes and also be fully present in that meeting. We have to be in a space to where we are also not only providing space for people to come, but they can count on us to close that feedback loop, right? Even managing our own inboxes. For the volume of email that we receive, especially when something is popping, is very, very difficult. Especially if I've got like three other inboxes that, you know, keep my lights on in my house that are going at the same time. What I want to challenge us to think about is the concept that many hands make light work and the ability for us to develop a strong understanding and, I would say, vision for what Seattle is outside of our director districts, right? So that is the kind of like genesis for why we want to do things in teams, we un-silo, we provide a more consistent opportunity. It's not even our birthday and this dude is sharing trees, so healthy, oh my gosh. As well, yeah, no, I know, round two. I didn't know that you were into raisins like that. I'm sorry, we need to, we need to have that, that's a bigger conversation, yeah. It was like literally, for those of you who are listening at home, the superintendent got a bowl of raisins for his birthday, like every 39-year-old asks for. And so what we're really trying to do in this fashion is just ensure that we're breaking down barriers, we are un-siloing information, we are making consistent schedules that people can predict, right? By having our directors participate in teams and by putting it on a calendar, we accomplish two things. First, there is an opportunity for your community to know where you're going to be, right? And maybe they might not necessarily be able to make it to your October engagement, but they might be able to make it to your September engagement, or your December engagement, or whatever the case may be. The other piece that that, that, that gives credence to is the ability for a community member to essentially, if they really want to interface with as much of the board as possible, they could then plan out their years, like, okay, I want to show up at these community members and then I would have had an opportunity to speak with this many board directors. It also gives us as board directors an opportunity to plan out our lives around our community engagement opportunities, right? Because managing like a monthly community meeting at, utilizing the library model with no staff is not a reliable source. But if we are asking folks to commit to three engagements, because what it breaks down to, if we were to do 12 engagements a year, members are doing these community engagements in OPMA guidelines, which is three per engagement, that works out to about three opportunities that you are expected to be at as a board director over the course of a year. Let me make a very clear distinction right now. And I'm really trying to think of, I've been really trying to think of an analogy to compare the library model to what we're doing now. And the best way that I can articulate it is that there is community engagement and then there are community interactions, right? And let me go a little bit deeper into that. I want you to think about it in a workout model. So say you are on this really strict workout plan. You're training for, to be a power lifter at the Olympics, right? And you are going to the gym on a regular basis, you're hitting your program, all that good stuff. But one of those days, you decide, okay, you know what? I am going to just like do a Bowflex at home. Do they even still make Bowflexes? I'm going to do a home workout with my weights that I got at home. That workout isn't bad, but it's not on your plan. You see what I'm saying? It's not a bad thing to have community interactions. It's not a bad thing to continue to have your library meetings, right? But it doesn't rise to the same level in credence that a community engagement event sponsored by the board does. And here's the other thing, one's not better than the other and we're not trying to say that you can't do that. You should be interacting with your community as much as possible. That is a good thing. You, I would say that like you want to be careful about like the commitments that you make in those spaces, right? And I don't think that anybody has any nefarious intent here. But, you know, I've been wrong before, I'll be wrong again. I think that what I'm trying to drive home is that the, I really view these things as separate, but they serve the same purpose. To give us a better sense of what are the opinions out in community? How do we translate those effectively into the policy that we create? And how do we do so in a way that prioritizes making our opportunities for engagement consistent and uh, accessible and predictable? As well as being two-way, as well as hitting all the other marks that uh, we set out for ourselves, or rather that soon after spoke as governance has set out. But also, if you want to go and do extra, do extra for sure. We have a, we just need to prioritize and put some parameters around what is the expectation as a board. So let's talk about some of the deliverables that we've completed. Before I move on, does anybody have any questions? Does that track? Cool, thank you. Hit me up if it doesn't. Yo, looks like you have a question.
It's actually not a question, but maybe a slight restatement and make sure that we're all still talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
That what we're looking to do is define the difference between engagement as an elected official with people who voted for you.
Yeah.
Or with people who have a complaint or concern they want to bring to your attention. And engagement as authorized by the board on an issue that is of the board's purview.
One hundred percent.
So it's, 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 again, what Brandon said, it's not that the, the library, it, it, it's not that that's not engaging with community members. It is, but the, the, where we, where we are now and, and kind of historically have been as a school, in my experience as a community member over the last decade plus, is that engagement is open mic at the podium, which is one way, which is not actual, you know, actual engagement. Or individual library meetings, which may or may not be about anything that the board's actually going to make a decision on. And it tends to veer towards so-called customer issues. Which again, if you're having a hard time solving a problem and you're not sure who to go to and you're hit a brick wall, your board member's not a bad person to go to.
Yeah.
The bad practice is if we as a board then say, we have engaged with the entire community and we can well represent the vision and values of the entire community.
Yep.
That is what we have to hold ourselves accountable to doing as a board. And uh, that, I think that's what we're talking about is not what does it mean to have a conversation with a board director? But what, how do we as a board define board engagement?
Yeah, and I think that even taking that a step further, it's like, going back to the conversation that we had at the beginning, it's like, okay, you say that we didn't do community engagement because I didn't talk to you. We say that we did community engagement because we talked to these, you know, community members over here. I think what that necessitates is for us to A, say exactly who we talked to in every instance and be super clear about that. And also be prepared to be held accountable to like, these are the folks that we talked to. And like be super clear because it is beyond our capacity to be able to have a conversation with seven hundred and seventy thousand people. You know what I'm saying? It is beyond our conversation to have, it is beyond our capacity to have a conversation with forty-five thousand families for every decision that we make. That is why we have a representative model of government, okay? That said, we also can't hide behind the fact and think that we're doing a good job and like that it's an acceptable answer to say, oh no, we did community engagement without telling folks exactly who we talked to. And I think that like, that is a good thing, both in terms of accountability and in terms of our values that we have set out for our board and the values that we are trying to reflect to community. If we are trying to actuate on our strategic plan, we need to be able to say without question that we regularly interface and engage with black boys and their families. Point blank, period. If we are saying that like we have real goals around like making any uh, potential changes to a special education model, we need to be able to say that we have uh, interfaced with those who are receiving those types of services and the people who care for them. As well as other folks in the community, because we don't want to just hear from the people who are most impacted. We want to hear from as many people as possible or people that make sense. But what I'm saying is we need to offer, or rather take a more strategic approach to how we conduct community engagement. And not just like try to, you know, cast a net and catch as many people as we can. Because what we are often doing is um, providing even more access to the folks who generally have showed up at our meetings. And that's not a bad thing, right? You, you wave your head back and forth. I think that like, what I'm trying to say is, is that many things can be true at the same time. Those folks' opinions matter one hundred percent. And we would not be doing our jobs if we did not try our best to take a more strategic approach to getting as many opinions as we can from the people who are most impacted by the decisions that we're making. That's just point blank, period. I will fight anybody any day on that. Director Sargent, or Michelle?
I, I would just like to make a comment.
Please.
Particularly for people who don't necessarily understand the difference between um, representative governance and board governance.
Yeah.
Unlike other elected officials like city council and county council, they actually have a staff.
Right.
Right? And so they field phone calls, um, they prioritize, they hand over the most, what they deem the most important to the actual elected official. That is their sole job. That, I mean, there are people in those offices, that is their sole job. Contrast to school board, we do not have a staff. I remember back in the day when I was attending um, when, when Mary Bass, there's very few of you in here who know Mary Bass, but uh, Mary Bass comes from a very influential and famous Seattle family. They're all CD folks. Her dad and her uncle were principals in this district, teachers and then principals. I used to go to, to board meeting, uh, not board meetings, well, I did come to board meetings, but I used to go to community meetings with Mary. And um, what I didn't know is that I was in training. Because I would have stopped going. But one thing I, I noticed about Mary that I, it's something I don't possess, is her ability to be all-inclusive. I do remember her having note takers there. Uh, my role with her was to get food and snacks. Black folks don't have meetings without food and snacks. But here's the deal, Mary was paying for that out of her pocket. So I want to bring up that we don't have a budget either to do actual community engagement. And so for the public, um, it's important that you understand we're not city council, we're not county council, we're not state, you know, elected representatives uh, or senators, rep, you know, we don't operate that. We don't have a staff. And so this model that Brandon, that Director Hershey is talking about is what I believe is going to be most beneficial for the community to actually elevate some of those things that we as individual board directors aren't necessarily able to do. But then what we can do is we can bring it to Dr. Jones or we can bring it, you know, to uh, Ms. Redmond. Or, you know, to Fred, my friend Fred Podesta over there. Like we, we can actually, you know, translate, who does this go to? And then the other piece of this, and, and I'm just going to say it, it may seem off topic. But you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to be someone to do this job. You should be able to work and support your family. And still be able to sustain the level of work. I work a full-time job for King County Government. That is my paid work. It also means, as Gina knows, I, there's a boundary that I don't have, that I have that other directors don't have. Well, I had that job before I came here, I'm not quitting it. And so this, this model that we're proposing will hopefully allow all of us to actually be involved in community engagement. I haven't done any, well, I've done one. And I didn't feel like it was successful because there, it wasn't engagement. It was me listening to people's complaints about things I could do nothing about. And so that's not productive and it gives a false, it sets false hopes and expectations for the participants. And so we want the community to understand what our role is and how we can best advocate for this thing that we're going for, which is high-quality public school education for every single child in this district, right? That's what we want, that's our role. But this, this just random, and it's not that I don't meet with, I do meet with people. People call me on my cellphone. If I don't change my cellphone number, I'm going to continue to get the calls. Like I got one today, right? I'm not changing my cellphone number. So people who know how to get to me will get to me and then I've got to do the back work to get them where they need to go. And so I'm making these statements for the public because it's really important that you understand, it's not that we're ignoring you, right? It's not that we don't care what you have to say. It's not that we don't care about your child. We do, we do care, we care about all the kids. But we have a limited role and responsibility and we can only do so much.
Absolutely right. Go for it.
To add to that, I will also say that every time we as individuals take, being polled into one specific instance is actually capacity that we are robbing from our system of providing clear governance and direction on behalf of the whole community. And it's really, really hard to not respond to those things because they're very urgent. But our responsibility is not to solve those individual problems, but to create conditions that will allow for future success of students and to create conditions that will eliminate this reactive.
Yes.
Stance.
That's right.
And so I just, from the uh, from the recommendations from the um, uh, Governance Committee, proactive, predictable, scheduling, scheduled community engagement will ensure that the board takes responsibility for owner engagement with the entire community and frees the superintendent and the rest of the district staff to focus on customer service, family engagement, and partner engagement. So another reason stuff comes to us is because historically the board has not solidly defined its role and responsibility in terms of engagement. Therefore, we cannot expect the district or hold the district accountable for providing more effective um, uh, direct service engagement, partnerships with community members who are providing service, bringing in families to their community, uh, bringing in families into their child's education. Because when, when, and then things still kind of spin out of control because when everybody's in charge of something, nobody's actually in charge of it.
Right.
So this is also, we as a board saying, it's our role to represent the vision and values of the entire community and we have to invest in the time and direction in doing that so that we can be clear about our expectations from the district and people know where to go. We can create a structure where um, we're not all jumping up every time everything happens. So the um, yeah, the two charges were board take responsibility for owner engagement. The board creates a proactive engagement opportunity for community rather than a reactive one. And the board learns to engage as a team rather than individuals. Which again, doesn't mean you can't engage as individuals, but we have to be clear when we're doing engagement as defined by the board and on something the board is going to discuss or make a decision of. And when we're doing individual engagement that may or may not have anything to do with something that the board actually has authority over. That thing can happen, but we can't pretend that one is the other. So um, Director Hershey, if you're, it looks like you're prepared to do this, what the deliverables?
Yeah.
Were and where we, oh.
Yep.
Where we are.
Yep, that's where we're headed next, but before we go there.
Um, just real quick, and it's possible that you're going to touch on this, but one of the things that I feel like is really critical here is um, community education around what the board actually does. Because we're talking, we're talking about it now.
That's part of our job.
Okay.
That's actually part of our job.
I don't think so. No, but I mean, it is, it, nobody, nobody actually knows what the board does or what the board doesn't do, like truly nobody. And I include myself in that until like two months ago. So um, I just think that in order for, like, I, you can talk about that?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so I'll.
I think it is critical and I agree with you.
Okay, okay. I just, yeah, I feel like if we don't like lead with an education campaign around what we do and what we don't do, then it's going to make all of our further engagement more fraught.
And follow up with behavior that aligns with what we've said we do and don't do.
Yes.
Yeah. Did you have something you were going to say, Gina? Okay, cool. So I did, we just want to, you know, throw another log on that fire in terms of like being super clear because it's, we can't just like turn the faucet off though at the same time. To your point, there is an educational like campaign that is going to have to be multi-phase and multi-year. Because here's the thing, if you just have community folks that are coming to you after they have been like, if, after they have been, their community engagement efforts have been successful in the way that they have been operating for decades and just all of a sudden say, nope, we're not doing it, uh, you will not be in your seat for much longer. Which is, you might not want to, right? But the idea that I'm trying to communicate is that our system isn't fully set up to be responsive in the way that it needs to be yet. We're still, I believe in us, our superintendent has made epic strides in that direction and we as a board are getting really um, really under ourselves. But I don't want to paint this picture that like the folks who have shown up to the meetings at the library model are only concerned with themselves and their school and their problems, right? There are some real legitimate issues within our system that folks don't know how to fix because they either have not gotten an answer at their school level. They have emailed either us or like central office and have not gotten a response. And to just say that like, we are in a position to where we are now only representing the vision and values of the community and not supporting those mem, community members in wayfinding to get to some form of resolution when they've been ignored is also untenable and frankly unacceptable. And I think that we all around this table can agree with that. So it's not, it's not as black and white as we would like it to be. At the same time, I think that there is an opportunity to do both and still hold true to all of the aims that we have set out for ourselves. And we can talk about that more later if anybody has interest in that. So let's get to the meat. Completed deliverables that we have done. So to your point, educating folks on what the board does. We did a series of informational one-pagers on the role of the board and they can be found in the committee packet and on the committee page on the website. So those are there. But I have a problem with that because those are boring, right? Like no one who is really trying to figure out what the board does is going to go to the website and be like, oh, I really found that one pager to be incredibly helpful. No, right? Like it just is not going to happen. And there are some people out there who might, but the vast majority of the people aren't. And so we need to think, go ahead, Liza.
I was just going to say, those people end up on the school board eventually.
Yes, exactly. They're all, all of the people who would do it are right here already. Found them. But, so I think that I would like to challenge us, and this is an opportunity for community interaction, it's not community engagement, to think about, okay, how do we meet people where they're at? That's the same thing that we ask our teachers to do for our students and our families. How do we meet them where they're at? So I think finding more ways to engage in all forms of media. Having a relationship with um, the news community here. Having a relationship with the news community here in our district, right? Even though we have one spokesperson, and that is President Rankin, it is a widely-known thing that you are more than welcome to talk to these establishments as long as you are communicating with President Rankin. And you're not, you know, going off on a tangent of left field if the Board has already voted on something. You can express your opinion as an individual Board member, but once the Board has voted on it, that's, that's what it is. I think that we could do a better job of utilizing video. I think we do a better job, Superintendent Jones really does a great job of this, and has done really good jobs of this in the past in terms of just putting videos out to communicate things to the district, and families and things like that. I think that we could do a better job of going on podcasts. I think that we could do a better job of, like, showing up in traditionally non-educational spaces. There is a huge faith community that we have not necessarily tapped into a lot. And if we're really thinking about where our students are, it's not just limited to community-based organizations, surprisingly. I think we could have a better relationship with our labor partners and the business community, quite frankly. Because if I'm thinking about what I would be doing at this age as a sixteen-year-old here in the city of Seattle, and this is just for me, I know I'm painting a very limited picture. I'm either at a sneaker shop trying to find my next pair of Jays, right, cuz I'm addicted, or I'm at my job trying to earn money to buy whatever it is I'm trying to do. So, if I'm really trying to be in a position to where I am not only preparing our students for the world that comes after them, or rather, the world that comes after our care at Seattle Public Schools, I think that we could do a vastly better job of interfacing with our labor partners, and especially those who might not necessarily have jurisdiction here at Seattle Public Schools. Talking about, like, MLK Labor, Building Trades, all that type of stuff, to see, okay, what are you looking for, right? As well as our business community. Where are you seeing our kids hang out? Where, what are they interested in? Like, I, I think that there's just so much good information that we can gain from sectors that we normally haven't interfaced with that could do a really good job of indicating the vision and values of our community in ways that we traditionally haven't before. So, I, that's just my plug for doing things a little bit different occasionally. Again, not engagement, but still important. The next thing that we have completed is a template for Board Community Engagement Event. That's included in today's packet. We wanted to provide some sort of structure, because when I was putting together meetings for the library model, and even meetings for the D7 Group that I used to host during the height of the pandemic, we were really either just talking about topics of the day, or like, it was a free-for-all. And by having a template and a starting place, it really, not only better positions Board Directors to be more effective in those meetings in terms of making sure that you're giving really good information, it also provides a roadmap for folks who are going to be attending your meeting in terms of an agenda. We haven't, we would not go into a school board meeting without an agenda. We should not do that for community meetings either. Okay. List of topics that the Board Community, list of topics for Board Community Engagement, also in your packet. If you wanna take a look at those, and if you have any questions for them, let me know. I don't have it in front of me. I'm not looking at one of the documents at this moment. But, I'm more than happy to come over there in just a second. Cool. Right on. Next up is recommendation for cadence of meetings, phasing of work, and a fall engagement calendar. Let me be super clear, we were hoping to do this in a more, I would say, cohesive way. But given that we are five and no longer seven, it is, we got a lot of stuff going on, as we always have. And that's been the real biggest challenge of being able to stand this up in the way that we all want and envision, is because I think as, again, changemakers, solutions-oriented people, once we have a model, we wanna stand it up immediately, and nothing, Rome was not built in a day. It took us decades, and this is something that I borrowed from Superintendent Jones and his team especially. Shout out to Fred Podesta, I don't know where you at, but shout out to you Fred. Hey, there he is. It took us decades to build this problem, it's gonna take us decades to solve it, right? To solve it effectively. So, and another thing I heard from Superintendent Jones, but, how do you need an elephant? One bite at a time. When you're tackling something like community engagement, which has been a problem in every school district since the dawn of school districts, one meeting at a time. I think that there also, for this Board, and for the individuals on this Board, is a need for things to be perfect before we do them. And I think that, especially because you don't want it to go poorly, right? And you want people to feel like they got something from it. But, a, a really, I'm, I'm just the king of sayings tonight. A really popular saying in the creative community, you've probably heard this, Evan and Liza, is, "Don't let perfect get in the way of the good." It, it, yes. And, you will only get better from there. But this is like, for me, like, in my spare time, what little I have, I am a creative, I have thousands of hobbies. And I have the perpetual desire to share those hobbies with the world in many mediums. The problem is, is that, like, I don't do that, because I'm so inside of my head thinking like, oh, this isn't good enough to share yet, I need to do X to it. Whereas, like, when I show it to my friends, right, I'll just be honest with you, I'm really into Lego right now. I'm trying to get to a point to where I have the skills that are good enough to present my work at the convention that comes here, it's called BrickCon. And I'm building these models, and I'm like, this doesn't look any better than when I was seven. And then I'll show them to, like, my friends, and they'll be like, where did you buy that set? Right? As if it was something that I had gotten off of a store shelf. And so, that is just a constant reminder, it's like, we are our own biggest critics, and there are people out there that will love us just for putting it out there, right? So, I don't want good, or rather, I don't want perfect to get in the way of the good for us, because we don't have time to just, like, try to, like, and I think this is another thing that we get, you know, critiqued on, is like, we're such sophists, that like, we'd sit and we'd talk through the Seattle process of like, oh, well, we've gotta have this, and we've gotta do that, and we've gotta have this, and we've gotta do that. And it's like, people just wanna talk to us, people just wanna know where they can find us, they wanna come talk to us, they wanna know what's going on. And we need to put ourselves in a position to do that. I think Superintendent Jones did a great job of that. And while it wasn't necessarily by Student Outcomes Focus Governance Board Engagement, great engagement through well-resourced schools, and an opportunity for Board Directors to come and see what that could look like, I think was a great opportunity. Did it fit to a T the model that it was laid out? No, nothing ever will. But, I don't think that the answers would have been any different had we done it by the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Model versus, like, where we got out of here. And maybe they would have been, I don't know, I don't see the future. But, what I can say is that, that was a, we get constantly really good feedback on that. And, I think that that gives us an opportunity to not let perfect get in the way of the good, and to accept help when we can have it, so. Some key, so those are the completed deliverables in addition to the timeline that Ellie and Board Staff, or Board Office Staff completed. Do we have any questions on those? Go for it.
Timeline, one-pagers, template, topics.
Yep.
Were there other deliverables not met that we, so, so because the committee has sunsetted?
Yeah.
If there were other deliverables not met, do we wanna meet those, or are they no longer relevant?
I do not believe, so, no, I don't think that they're relevant. Especially for this time, I don't think that there were any that we, like, just drastically didn't meet. Yeah, me either. But to that point, I think what logically makes the most, like, the next step, is that, like, so, for example, you had the ad hoc community, the ad hoc engagement on governance, right? Of like, presenting, or what was it, the, what was the exact name, the one that you?
You mean presenting our recommendations?
But, no, 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 what was the name of the committee?
Ad hoc Governance Committee.
Right. So, you presented your recommendations, and then it was up to the full Board to execute, right? So, you as President.
Well, to adopt.
To adopt, yeah, but to also do, you know what I'm saying? So, like, yes, to adopt, but also to actually do the recommendations. I think what logically, from my vantage point, knowing the work that we got done and where we need to be, my suggestion would be either to make it a task of the full Board, and let's just do it, or, like, figure out a way to implement it in a way. That could either be through a separate committee, but I think, especially as we're having, I'm just saying, it could be, no, I know. But I think it's going to be a grand opportunity when we have two more Board Directors join us to just hit the ground running and implement through some of the things that we've laid out here. Uh, which is actually a really good segue, was that your only question, or did you have more?
No, I think that was it.
Okay, sick. So, which brings us to takeaways, right? So, first one, phasing community engagement. This kinda goes back to eating the elephant one bite at a time. We need to just, like, set a goal and take it one step at a time, we need to, we need to have a meeting. We need to figure it out, let's plan out, once we get these two new Board Directors, let's plan out three meetings for the rest of the year, whatever it might be, I'm just spitballing. But like, seriously, but like, we just need to do it, we just need to do it. And I think that, like, what I really love about where we are now is that we're actually utilizing work session time to do our work. And I think that these would be great times to do some planning around when, where, actually get, like, the checkboxes lifted for, like, how our community engagement is going to look per topic. That way, folks can also watch these work sessions to see how we came to these decisions, so, that's one thing. The next piece is the need to coordinate with staff for community engagement, timing learnings, community feedback, and technical support. This, Superintendent Jones was all-in on this, and what that looked like when we were meeting as a committee. So, just continuing that relationship, I'm sure the two of you will talk, as you often do, to figure out what that looks like. And then we need to, a, at the end of that process, we said we wanted to wait until the new Director started to hold the events. Surprisingly, we are back in that position. So, I think that that actually holds really true. I think that, given the fact that we're gonna be holding forums for the new Directors, that's engagement in and of itself is probably chief to the, like, most important thing that we're doing right now. So that we can have full representation to tackle big things like the budget and everything else. So, my two cents. Continuing work. Uh, I think that we need to schedule, uh, spring community engagement events. I think we need to determine, uh, numbers of events that we wanna have for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. I think we need to finalize our engagement toolkit. And then, there's also been a lot of talk around the community engagement policy. I think the only thing that I would recommend is that the policy and actually doing community engagement are dual-track. That one does not necessarily come before the other. The reason for that is that by getting into it and seeing, like, if this model that we set out for ourselves even works well for us, would probably inform some pieces of the policy that have left to be seen. Um, and additionally, we just don't have any more time to wait, uh, in terms of making sure that we are engaging with our community as much as possible. So, that being said, this was a very heady community, and leading a, uh, community, little, this was a very heady committee. And leading a committee with the voting record, the voting Directors being Director Hampson and Director Harris was fun, to say the least. I think, though, those two particularly, and I, and I say that just in a silly manner, but like, I am, there's a reason that I chose both of them to serve on that committee. They both represent in a really critical aspect of community engagement that I think is both critical for the district, and offers a ton of opportunity for growth in those areas. And I say that because when we're thinking about our Board in general, like, with those two Directors who are no longer serving on the Board with us, an immense amount of institutional knowledge across many different aspects of this district, and have seen a lot of the same problems that we are experiencing right now, both from the vantage point of being on that side of the podium and that side of the podium. I also believe strongly that as we are building this out, we need to be one hundred percent committed to making it stick. Because if we, it's going to be another cycle of, like, if we get our community, if we do our jobs good enough, and we can show our community that, like, we can engage with you in a way that is not only going to be more productive and accessible for everybody, but also closes the feedback loop, and then that all of a sudden goes away for whatever reason, that's problematic, and it, and it just adds to a spiral that I don't think would necessarily be healthy, especially given a lot of the, a lot of the really challenging things that are ahead of us. So, uh, that's what I got for you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. So... Oh, do you have a question? Thank you, Brandon, for the, the work, and also the report out of the work. So, we, we had on here kind of discuss the current state, and discuss where we want to go. And so, I think our, our current state is what it is. And our, where we wanna go, we have, so we have here the recommendations from the Governance Committee, which is a pretty solid foundation, including a sample policy. We have the, um, creating an active and meaningful Board Ownership Connection Guidance from our governance structure. And then we have a whole lot of implementation tools from the Ad Hoc Engagement Committee.
Yep.
So, what, uh, where I'm headed for the rest of this meeting is, as Brandon said, the policy doesn't have to come before anything happens. But we do need to take these pieces that we have and commit to something on paper. Just because that's how we govern ourselves, that's in our, in our governance manual. Any Board Director joining the Board should be able to see, what, what do we mean when we say community engagement? And to go, oh, I see, this is, this is the, this is what the Board thus far has committed to doing with a procedure that says how it happens, that's, that's made in cooperation with staff, depending on capacity, so that there's an agreement of what are we expecting ourselves to do, and what support is there to do it? So, we need to kind of take all these, take the, the implementation resources, and the recommendations, and that's our kind of longer term, that eventually needs to be codified in policy and incorporated into the schedule. In the immediate, we have goals and guardrails for the strategic plan. Which is a huge opportunity for community engagement right now. And what's really cool is that we will have a Board of Seven who gets to be part of that process together from the beginning.
Yep.
Instead of catching up, or, oh, I totally disagree with that, or, you know, what are you guys talking about? We have an opportunity to build that plan together, and provide the guidance to the Superintendent in a very cohesive way that I am excited about. We also have an opportunity to just, like, we actually don't have time to wait. We need to start that engagement yesterday.
Yep.
And so, we're able to not let perfect be the enemy of the good, and just do some stuff. So, did you have, before I move us forward, I don't wanna, okay. So, basically, what I wanted us to talk about today was the, the longer term, the work from the committee, and these other things, a policy for what our expectations are and what we hold each other accountable for. And what committee can, what the community can expect from us. Um, and then, the short term, we gotta get these goals and guardrails. So, uh, the, typically, or in, in the model that we're using, the committee, a committee exists to make recommendations to the full Board. So, they would pass recommendations of some kind, vote them out, and that would come to the Board in a package for the Board to discuss the recommendations and adopt, as Brandon mentioned with the Governance Committee. So, these are implementation, we could adopt a package. We could also task, if somebody is particularly interested in starting a draft policy, that these things support. And that could, and again, we don't have to wait for that to happen before we do these other things, but that's a body of work that needs to happen, we need to have sort of the, the full authorization of the Board for, yes, this is what we agree to do. So, I'm kind of throwing out there, if anybody is.
Yeah, I'm having to spearhead the actual policy work.
Cool.
Yeah.
And we could have a.
And welcome a team.
I was gonna say, we could definitely have a second person without worrying about OPMA.
Yeah.
And I, I think, I, I feel like that's. Um, and I, I think, I, I feel like that's something we could do without having to have another committee. We could just say, the work has been done, it's very transparent. We've had an opportunity to look at it and understand-
Yep.
-the recommendations. And now what we need is something that the board can, can say, thumbs up from the board.
Yep.
Um, so that is awesome.
Yep, I know.
If you want to take that piece, um, nobody has to decide right now, but if somebody else wants to tag team, and I know staff has already, uh, or the board office staff has indicated and Bev, that um, they are prepared to support us in that. And to be super duper clear, this is a governance policy. This is not our direction to the district about how the superintendent and staff should engage with people. This is a policy for the board's interaction and engagement with community and our direction to ourselves. So this is all, you know, we could, it could come back through the ad hoc policy committee too, since we have to um, briefly stand that up again to complete that work.
Yep.
Um, so, so, sweet, we have that.
Yep.
Um, in the shorter term, we have uh, the goals and guardrails. And so, um, are, are we ready to shift to that from, from the longer term conversation? Okay.
I feel like there's something on the tip of your tongue. Hold up.
Um, I, there was just a lot of, a lot of positive things said around task and I'd just been synthesizing and I was gonna share that, but I can come back. Cause I think, I think President Rankin got most of it and so.
Yeah, okay, but Director Todd, did you still have something that you wanted? You sure? Okay, cool.
Okay, so, in the short term, we have been having the uh, I don't know what to call it, direct service engagement, engagement with families about wh- what they, how they would define uh, like critical components of a school, what a well-resourced school is. The part that we are responsible for as a board is well-resourced to do X. So, if we, so we need to um, continue on that conversation with the, okay, we've, we've discussed with families and heard from families what's important to them i- in a school, what they expect there. Our job is to engage with the whole Seattle community about our expectations for the children of Seattle, including business, faith, labor, all, you know, all these different groups. And provide direction to the superintendent in the form of goals and guardrails about what the expectation is from these well-resourced schools. And that will, uh, both is, A, our obligation as the board to set those. But B, allow for the continued conversation of implementation of um, when we're talking about uh, what we, what decisions there are to make. Um, it needs to be in the context of what it is we're trying to achieve. So, uh, we, I actually, is this, I mean, if you are, I would love for you to add now, um, kind of a, um, the uh, the highlight version of the well-resourced school conversation to this point, which many of us have participated in. But if you want to add that, and then we can continue to talk about how those two things are going to dovetail together and then, and then what we're going to do with that as a board.
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask Bev Redmond to tag team with me on this. Um, and as President Emeritus Hershey was talking about, uh, well-resourced schools was one of the uh, four points that came out of the, the community engagement ad hoc committee. And our, our attempt to do that was to just extend the reach of that committee to commu- to community, get some uh, some activity going and making sure that we've uh, reached out to community five different, five different regions uh, and brought information back that could be used to advance the things that we need to advance. Seeding uh, what we're gonna talk about with the levees, seeding what we're gonna talk about with the strategic plan, seeding what we're gonna talk about with the upcoming budget challenges at that time. Uh, and so garnering that information was a very rich process. Bev, if you could kind of talk about the highlights of that. And then where Director Rank- President Rankin and I have been talking about is, how, how does that, how does that, is that foundational? Is that a catalytic piece of, piece of information? Or is it something that we can, we can use and refine uh, in a, in a, in a different way? But I just wanted to make sure we got centered again on what the outcome of those engagements were. And, and I think the real question on the table now is, how will we use that information going forward?
Good evening to the board and thank you for bringing forward one of my favorite topics. I am going to drop back in the pocket just for a second to reclaim a little bit of information. You said, don't let uh, the good become enemy of getting too great or that perfect element that we're trying to often, the other way around, uh, trying to guard against. That was really the impetus of well-resourced schools. It started in the ad hoc community engagement committee. And as we sat and talked and talked and talked, we was like, we gotta go. We really need to get out there. It's not going to be perfect, but we need to take the steps out there. And it's better if we go together. And that was one of the comments that we received from the community or the reaction. All of us showing up in tandem and being in space together, they rarely get to see that other than in this kind of space. And we know what viewership is like at a board meeting. It's limited, right? So that was one of the elements that got us started. It wasn't meant to be everything, but it was meant to be a continuum at a start. So we began in August of last year, going out and talking and speaking to our community across the regions and breaking that up night by night. Yes, was it a sacrifice? And we will have sacrifice as we're going back out and doing this. But we came and we talked about three questions. What do you love about your schools? What about the academics and the re- and the extracurriculars? And then what supports do you want to see? Again, not knowing that we were, we're guarding against that perfect piece, but not knowing exactly what we would get. There's a fear of what you might encounter, but we encountered a version of success. Not the ultimate. We're never going to get there, we're always going to be striving. But what we saw, over four thousand pieces of, uh, I'm sorry, connection points or people coming to events. Either they were coming in person or they were contributing to survey. And over seven thousand, Dr. Jones says near ten thousand. I'm like, okay, it's over, it's over seventy-five, I'll get there. Give me a little more room to run, thank you. That, those data points came in. And what we heard, neighborhoods, they love their neighborhoods. Love the schools that are in their areas. Also love, don't touch the academics, keep that high and achieving. Please, give us the extracurriculars. And then on top of that, the supports that we need, particularly across mental health, braid that in. One of the, I would say, weak boards. We identified it coming in, again, not trying to be perfect, but we needed more time with our students. We also needed more time with families that aren't going to come to the microphone. Aren't necessarily going to go on and get to a survey because this may be their only piece of equipment that they have. So, the need is to go to well-resourced two. So I'm going through, we went through phase one, we're going to two. We'll be headed out toward the end of this month, not too many days from now. Going out to see students, also doing a student survey. Then we're also going to hold a night, and maybe, I don't know if we'll get to two, but at least one major night for our families, our multilingual families and our families. And I'm going to use the word affinity groups for this reason, but I'm going to explain what I'm talking about. We want to make sure that we're getting to our families that we don't see and hear. And I'm going to say families that might look like me. Families who might have ASL as part of their main language or is their main language. We want to make sure that we're getting to those families. That doesn't mean y'all can't come. You can. However, I want to make sure that the doors are open for those individuals and that this is a time to highlight what's going on in their families and how they feel about their schools. How do they feel about the academics and the extracurriculars? How do they feel about the supports for their students that need to be available or their children? They don't like it when we call them students, they're their children, they're our children. So, that is phase two. And we stand ready, and I'll repeat, we stand ready, when you're ready, to do the same thing that you did for us in well-resourced one, and that is show up together. Dr. Jones.
Bev, always clear and compelling. I, I wanna, if, if it's all right with the chair, to just kind of open it up for you all to ask us questions about the ideation and where we're going and what, what our thoughts are, if you have those. Otherwise, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it back, but I, I think uh, you all have a good sense of what well-resourced schools, uh, that engagement was and, and what can we do to extend that, make it go further? Check out, check some more boxes in terms of places that we didn't get to and things we want to see and reframing of questions and whatnot, but just really want to open it up to you all.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank my friend, Mr. Podesta, for finally getting to answering my question, what is the definition of a well-resourced school? For those of you who don't know, like, that is, like, don't come up with some term, don't come up with some acronym. If you can't define it and explain it for the people, then we really shouldn't be talking. I hounded him and hounded him and hounded him and he just kept, you know, giving me grace and saying, we're gonna get to that and, um, and we got to it. And we're, and we're on our way. Is it perfect? No, we're not looking for perfection. But it was really good. At least the couple of sessions that I went to, it was really good. And it's something that has never been done in this district before. And I know y'all, I, I keep reminding you, I've been here thirty-seven years, right? I've never seen anything like it. And so, we need to give praise to the organization and the hard work and the effort that, that went into that with no prototype of, of having done it before. And so I think the staff deserves, um, you know, the executive staff, all the staff who played a role, right? Because there are people who played a role that we don't even know, we don't even get to see because they're not visible to us, but they played a part. Like I saw people in the Garfield cafeteria that I knew were staff, but I'm like, what are they doing? You know, like, I didn't understand, but then Afra was like, oh, this was their job. This was their role to show up and, and do this. And I don't know their names, I just recognize them, but I hope, I'm, I'm gonna, I think I'm speaking okay on behalf of the board to give, to let them know that they were seen, at least by me. I don't know what any of these other people were doing. But they were seen by me. And that matters, like, it, it matters, y'all. Anybody who knows me knows that I care about those people, right? I care about the people that don't get the credit, um, because they don't have the title or they, their, their pay grade is such that we just don't get to see them.
Oh, yeah, Director Briggs, go ahead.
Um, I was just curious to know a little more about the um, student engagement piece. And is that something that you all are planning to do during the school day? Like going into schools with kids while they're there? And you mentioned that that's happening at the end of the month, or start, it will start at the end of the month. And I'm just wondering, um, if there's been, if that's already been um, shared publicly and all that just detail kind of stuff.
All that detail kind of stuff, yes. Shared already, no, coming, yes. So we'll be releasing that in the next few days. You'll start to see some of that information start rolling. And in terms of the survey, we're gonna start survey. That will be, we're focusing on our high school students because they have that access and we certainly have, um, been afforded that access to them. Releasing that by email. Going to work with our schools to make sure that there is some time designated, so it's just not left up to chance or to availability as much as we possibly can to encourage participation there. And then we'll be able to work with some of our student groups. We're working with the Office of AMA and others to make sure that we are bringing some groups together to have those conversations in person as well. So we're gonna try on both sides. Thank you.
So, so another piece of this is, we have the opportunity to not just tuck in some questions that are vision and value questions, but we can actually center some of those questions um, as we, as we do this. So this can have dual purpose, not just uh, getting information around how we do the work, what we need to be sensitive to, what we, what the wants, wishes and desires of community are, uh, both staff internally and externally. But also really can, as, as you all will guide us, you know, what are the essential questions that you all want answered? So that we can uh, double down on these opportunities to get this vision and value data that you all can have to ultimately reset the goals and guardrails, thrust us into the next strategic plan, and then we can go forward. So, there's definitely room for that. Bev, I'm not talking out of turn, cause I know, I know that's my desire, but you know, sometimes it's harder to get it done. But I, I, I think we can, it's not just a tuck in and an, and an addendum. I think it can be centered as we go forward, is that right?
Happy birthday, sir, yes, we can make it happen.
Wink, wink.
No, we can get it done.
So, where we go from here, we've got the, the longer term, what would sort of our foundational cadence and expectation of engagement be that Director Hershey has agreed to continue leading on. In the shorter term, for the goals and guardrails, um, Dr. Jones and I have talked and are aligned in an approach that now I just want to share with you all. And if this seems like a good approach, we will keep going. If it doesn't, now is the time for us to talk about it, which is that we should, in order to give the clear direction that is needed for the development of the next strategic plan, um, we should really have our goals and guardrails. And, and again, it's not gonna, I don't anticipate some wide departure from the current ones. We're not gonna start with, everybody needs to learn how to scuba dive by the time they're in their grade or whatever. You, you know, it's not gonna be like a huge shift, I don't anticipate. But we need to go back out and reaffirm with, with the whole community, what are the, what are the, what are the, their goals for what children are able to know, what children, no one are able to do when they leave our system? And what are the values that are, that are sacrosanct, that we won't violate on our way to meeting those goals? And so, um, we really need to have those adopted by uh, the time we take our July kind of recess. So, you know, about the same time we adopt the budget, it's not a big deal, it's not a big time, there's not a lot going on. But we basically are in a situation now where we're talking about um, the budget and the approve, the approving of the budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year under the current strategic plan, which is totally fine and appropriate. As soon as we adopt that budget, staff immediately starts to work on the, on the next budget. And so, for us to get in front of that conversation and provide the direction on behalf of our community, we need to say, here are our goals and our guardrails, so that they can get to work on proposing strategies to meet those and start looking at um, budgeting for twenty-five, twenty-six under a known set of golden, goals and guardrails. So, um, yeah, Director Todd.
I thought on the timeline, the budget timeline, we would get a preview for those future budgets on your May eighth meeting? Is that correct? So how, how does that line up then?
So we're get a, we're get a sort of forecast on what the expectation is in terms of what resources we will have at that point. My understanding is it's not going to be, you know, super specific yet.
May, May eighth is the final, final plan. That's, this is, this is where we're going for twenty-four, twenty-five. However, along the way, we're- However, along the way, we're going to start to talk about, here are the twenty-five, twenty-six buckets, if you will. As you recall, we approved the fiscal stabilization plan for twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then there's the other three items on the fiscal stabilization plan that also speak to what we're considering in twenty-five, twenty-six. And so, by May eighth, you all will have a good preview, if you will, of what we're considering for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. But May eighth is really to close out to twenty-four, twenty-five. It's the final document, if you will. And so, but in our dialogues, we're starting to gradually release some of the planning for the second year, including, you know, what we're going to be trying to pursue with the legislature, including what kind of things that we need to be focused on for our levy. And those are all twenty-five, twenty-six items.
Does that?
Sort of. I'm a little bit confused how it comports with your timeline, but I'm willing to keep going here.
I think there's always multiple, like, we don't want staff to wait on, like, staff has a pretty good idea of what our projected revenues will be, what we'll have to work with, basically. And I think a good idea, like, we know that our highest cost is people. That's not going to suddenly change, right? So, the budget is always, until it's approved, and even when we approve the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, that's the budget, as is the best guess at that moment in time. You know, things start to change, you know, quickly thereafter.
Yeah, so I'm getting your question. I think, you know, we refer to this timeline that Dr. Butlerman shows us around budget as the snake. And there's different elements of it that we're talking about now that would line up also with strategic planning. And so, let us work out a different snake that shows this sequence. And some of these things are going to run concurrently. And so, the overlap, we need to be able to be really clear on how things won't, it's not going to be sequential. Things are going to be happening simultaneously. So, I want to be able to show you that in a written document and in a graphical form so that we know what we're talking about. And this is new that President Rankin and I have been talking about in terms of how do we sequence this up? So, we may have some, and when she said July, it's July-ish, and when we're talking about bringing the new guardrails and goals and guardrails on to inform the new strategic plan that will launch actually in twenty-five, but this is just some foundational work that we'll be doing in the duration of twenty-four and into early twenty-five. And so, we do need to sequence this in a way that it makes sense. So, I get your question.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And a visual would be helpful because that's, you know, I've got that snake in my head and I'm tracking and crossing off days or months.
Yeah, we need to, like, interweave some of these streams. So, where I would suggest we go in Goals and Guardrails is basically, we need to decide what we need, what information we need, what we need to hear in order to be able to develop and approve our next set of goals and guardrails. The Well-Resource Schools conversation has, I think, a lot of the values pieces in it. But in terms of student outcome goals, I think we are, need to ask some other questions specific about student outcomes. So, to add on to that, excuse me. And so, the suggestion that I would have as a way to start, and if you all, if it sounds good, I will work with Bev and Brent to firm it up. But where we are at is, and I've looked at a lot of other districts' processes for determining their goals and guardrails. We basically, we need to schedule a work session, or, excuse me, a retreat end of June, beginning of July, that we would dedicate towards whatever information we've gathered about goals and guardrails. We would spend a day together looking at those to come up with what they are. And then there would be, you know, a draft of those, and then we would adopt them at a meeting. And that would provide what Dr. Jones needs to know for the target of what we're aiming for, you know, the 2030 vision. In terms of the information that we need to gather, we could schedule as part of regular board meetings or as other events, we could schedule, I'm just making this up, two times where we invite community to a session with all of us, all seven of us, in addition to, or we could instead have our, here's our five questions that we're going to ask that will help us get the information that we need to determine these goals and guardrails. And we could each have sort of an outreach toolkit that if you go to a, if you're invited to a PTA meeting, you could say, "Oh, hey, while I'm here, we're working on our goals and guardrails as a board. Here are the questions that the board is asking everybody." So, we're not all saying, you know, we're not all asking for, we're asking for the same, for answers to the same question as a whole. And we could also have the support of staff to stand up a forum where people could just, anybody could also put in their answers to the five questions, or four or five questions. And there's really good examples of the questions that other districts have asked to get at what their goals and guardrails are. So, if some combination of a way for us each to go out and ask questions wherever we are and collect that information works, I will work on that with staff in a form of some kind. And then, and we don't have to answer these questions right now in this moment, but also an opportunity or two where maybe we're all together in one space or maybe two, I don't know, split, an opportunity to invite people into a discussion. But basically, we would, and then we would, as Brandon was talking about, you know, who have we talked to? Who did we engage with? We would gather, you know, I'm going to actually like the Ballard Lions Club next week. It would be so great to be like, "Hey, what is your vision for, you know, the students, the children of Seattle?" And be able to be like, Lions Club, you know, this-ish demographic, this area of town, this relationship to Seattle schools. And be able to, you know, when we get to the end, or when we get to, like, the end of May, be like, "Oh, my gosh." You know, in looking at all the different people we've asked about this, we're hugely missing the business community, or whatever that might be. If that sounds like a reasonable approach, we can work to formalize something. The other thing I think is really cool is that it will give, once we have our two other board members, it just, it will give us all an opportunity to have this immediate thing that has to be very much a team effort and also an opportunity for us to sort of introduce new board members to the to the community as we're doing this stuff.
Okay, yes, all of that makes sense. And then, did Brent sort of offer through their Part Two of the Well-Resource Schools to add in some of this work as well to where that could be incorporated? Or did I mishear that?
No, we had talked about that, like, if we have our questions, that if Brent is meeting with, I don't know, higher ed faculty for something, I'm just picking something, that he could say, "While I'm here meeting with you, on behalf of the board, we would really, they would really like your input on these five questions, you know, please send that, send that to them."
And I'm thinking even further, in the Well-Resource Schools Part Two conversations, that this is embedded into those conversations.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, tell me, Liza, if I got this right. So, your plan that you're proposing is that we, wherever any of us end up, we're like, "Hey, here's our questions that we're asking that, I'm tracking without, that'll make sense." And then, maybe you allocate a portion of regular board meetings to this or something? I think the part that I'm not totally understanding is, where are the other intentional, like, deliberate actions that we, or, oh, sorry, I'm like, totally, I've lost all my words. I guess what I'm trying to say, maybe I need to come at this differently. I'm not hearing in the plan how we are assured that we are going to get to hear from the folks who we already have a hard time hearing from, who don't, like, what are we doing between now and the end of May, I guess, or maybe beginning of June to ensure that we are creating opportunities for people who aren't necessarily going to show up to any of these things that we're talking about and making sure that we're hearing from them about what their vision and values are?
So, some of that I do think would be individually on us as directors to take those questions, to reach out to our communities and take those questions. We also, but so I guess my question is, I feel like minimum we need these questions that we're going to ask to inform us about developing the goals and guardrails, a way to collect that information, a way for us individually to, if we're in a space, be able to ask it. And then my question would be, and it sounds like there is willingness and capacity on the part of staff, do we also want to set up as part of Part Two or as part of a board meeting, a come-to-us session to answer these, to talk about and answer these questions?
Yeah.
And then in terms of communities that aren't often reached, I really think that's part of our role, is to make sure that we are going there.
I guess, so, yeah, what I'm really trying to say is, in this, in our community outreach plan for how we're going to conduct community outreach going forward, I feel like we need to implement that, like, right now. Do you know what I mean? Like, I feel like we need to do the thing that we're talking about doing in the future in order to get the information now that we need for the vision and values.
Yeah, so, one of the points Director Hershey talked about was scheduling the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar now-ish. But there's also the remaining calendar for this year. So, I think that we need to have, to your point, we need to have some intentionality behind which groups do we want to hear from? Which groups have the salient information that we need to move forward to say, "We've come up with enough information to establish these new goals and guardrails." And so, I think it's maybe another session or a small group of the board perhaps that can say, "These, this would be enough, or these would be the type of groups we need to hear from between now and July for us to be comfortable to say, 'We've met and we've conferred with these different groups and we have the information.'" And so, I think we definitely want to be supportive and help and even have some advisory support for you all as to how to get that done. But if we want to do it in an intentional way and we want to launch it now, I think we need to put it, we have to be intentional about putting it on the calendar.
Yeah, totally agree. That's exactly what I was trying to get to, I think, yeah.
Okay.
I think the other thing too is keeping some kind of a running list of, you know, and this is something we've talked about anyway, of, you know, where have board members been? Who have we talked to? This would actually be a really good test run of some kind of list for ourselves that we know where we've been and we know who we might be missing that we want to hear from.
So, Bev, President Rankin, or I, talking to myself, we've talked about this concept between a rotating board meeting and, you know, one of the concepts we've touched on was, what is a well-resourced school? Let's have, let's actually have a board meeting in a well-resourced school, or something that has the contours of that. And wherever we're trying to be regionally or with specific groups, we can actually be invitational and maybe have a, we have board meetings every, twice a month typically. One meeting here and one meeting at a school. And at that school, we'll also be invitational to the type of folks, or not the type of folks, the populations that we're trying to, we're trying to reach out to. So, if you all can put a finer point on that, I just wanted to kind of press into that a little bit around. We have venues, use them in a way to be targeted and intentional.
Yeah, this is something that we have talked about more actually about meeting agendas, but it's definitely connected to community engagement, knowing that there's a desire and a need to add that in. So, something that I have a draft of on my computer because I don't have a life, is an A agenda and a B agenda, where an A agenda would be focused on progress, would be focused on, like, the bulk of non-business items would be progress monitoring. That would be here. In a B meeting, the, there would be time reserved for, you know, hopefully in the future when we have a policy review schedule for policy discussion, or some other form of community engagement. So, I don't know what the capacity is right now, but that is something we could think about implementing sooner than I thought maybe we would be able to with alternating between the John Stanford Center and a school. And if we're in, you know, if we're at, I can't even think of a school right now. I'm trying to think of a school that's actually, the school that my kids go to all needs to be rebuilt.
Rankin Elementary.
There, if we're at Rankin Elementary, we could, and I like what you're saying about being invitational, go beyond just saying, "Oh, there's a board meeting here, but, hey, we know that we're going to have the May whatever meeting in this location, and the communities that live around there are this, this, this. Let's specifically ask that faith group, that community resource hub to, you know, actually say, like, "We would like you to come here. We're going to have a meeting at your school. Come at such and such time, and we want to hear from you, and we'll be talking about this." I think the willingness and eagerness on the part of the board is definitely there to do that. I also know there's a lot that it needs to happen between now and the end of the school year. I think this could be a really cool kind of jump into the deep end of what we need to do, because we need that information from our community to make our goals and guardrails, but also kind of a three-month trial period of longer term, what worked, what didn't, what do we want to do more of? What do we want to maybe not do again in the future as we have a more, kind of a, less on the immediate need and more on the kind of foundational expectations for community engagement? So, I guess, we're not taking any action right now, but if this is feeling like the right thing to talk about and do, I think we can move on that. The thing we do have to do is adopt goals and guardrails for the next strategic plan.
I think what would be helpful is sort of the ideas discussed here today, putting it together on like a timeline for, you know, here are the well-resourced school conversations, and, you know, here are the, you know, we're incorporating in these conversations, you know, the vision for the outcomes we want for our children. Also, in this, you know, maybe the board is going to hold a, you know, one of these community meetings that they're, that we're trying to stand up as we're putting together this policy. Is that going to go on this timeline somewhere? And maybe it is the list of who we want to intentionally make sure that we are reaching in coordination with our well-resourced schools' conversations, so that way we are hitting these different organizations. So, it feels like we need something to actually react to here at a timeline.
I wrote down a couple of notes, develop an ABC kind of, something for you to react to. I won't overwhelm my staff who's probably listening right now, but I have some.
I know. I feel like everybody who works for the district is like, "What are you guys talking about?"
I don't think they'll be super shocked if they at least have been hanging around me for a while. I've been foreshadowing a little bit for them, but we have blueprint already.
Yep.
Moving this into a well-resourced schools' vision and values piece, one of the things that we're doing in Phase Two is taking the results of One and saying, "This is what we heard. Does this still resonate?"
Yep.
"You have an existing plan that has not expired. How does this resonate?" So, let us finish the March Phase Two piece, and I think we might be able to. So let us finish the March Phase Two piece, and I think we might be able to kick in there and have some things for you to react to, and possibly be out there sometime in April, and use that April-May timeframe before parents and students leave us, so.
We do have a lot of June, but I am being summoned for jury duty in April. So that's another thing. But basically, basically, if this sounds like where we wanna go, I am happy to commit to working with Dr. Jones and Bev on a, on a, something more tangible to react to.
Yes. And quick logistical question, if, if I may. If, do we, will we have any access to, will the district be able to support any individual board member going into their community with, like, interpretation services or anything like that, if we're going in, in, on our own, as, as we discussed? To reach communities that were concerned could be missed in a lot of these, what is that, is, is that something that the district can provide, or is that not?
Yeah, I, I'd like to hear a little more about the need, 'cause it's, our, our staff is thin, and we wanna just be, as long as we can be planful on it, I, I'm, certainly we can support it. And so-
Okay.
As much lead time as we have, it's, it's hard to just grab, grab folks, particularly on that, that, those competencies. They're, they're, they're few and far between, and so we, we just wanna make sure we can schedule them out, so that's almost a guarantee they'll be there.
Yeah, and I have an idea around that, because I think that that's super important. And I wonder how for like, 'cause what I hear is that there is a real need for translation in these types of community engagement opportunities. How do we scale that up to get the most bang for the buck, because it is an incredibly expensive resource to provide? And if we could potentially do it with, like, your surrounding director districts, and like, really do good outreach? Because what happens a lot of the times is like, I know for ours, we might have one or two people that utilize the interpretation services that we have, but then we have six other folks that all need another specific type of interpreter, where had I had a bigger draw from just D7, we could have shared more information across more communities, and it would have been a more, I would say, stewardly use of resource. And that's not always possible, but I just wonder, it's like, how do we accomplish that and scale up so that it gets the most bang for our very limited dollars at the moment?
I would say, and to in combination with that, that this is where working with, you know, community members that you know already can be really helpful. Like, I, if, like Somali moms, either saying, we're gonna hold a session in Somali and ask specifically, like, can we have Somali interpreters? Or partake in a community meeting that's already happening, where they may already have interpreters? And, and come, you know, ask to be invited into that space. So there's, there's multiple different ways that can be done, but we could also generally, yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, not, not in asking community members, hey, can you come, can you come interpret this for me? But, oh, you're meeting with this group, you've invited me to come, you're providing interpreters already, that's so fantastic, 'cause I really wanna make sure that this is accessible to, to those community members.
Okay.
Yeah. I think in, in tandem with what Director Hershey said.
Yeah.
But I think, I think you point out, Director Briggs, an important point of the important work that Director Hershey's going to do in pulling together a policy or a structure or a calendar, because I love the idea of having a monthly board engagement meeting where there are three directors, where it's supported by the district. I am the one person here who does hold a monthly community engagement meeting, and I, I find it very valuable as a listening session to be able to represent my community. I move around. I would love it to be instead supported by the district where there are resources, because that's, I do hear that. I hear the need for those translational services, and I'm like, I'm in a library that I booked online, and, you know, I picked the time that they had available for me, sort of thing.
Yeah.
And so switching to that model, and, you know, I'm going to continue to hold my monthly meetings until we do switch, because I, I don't want to turn off that, that spigot. But I do see urgency in getting there and doing that work. And, and somehow also then incorporating it into how we also, 'cause it's going to be a process, do these, visioning of what we want for our students and our out, the outcomes we want for our students, because it is a continual process along with fitting, fitting it all in. So I, it's a, it's a large calendar and a, and a huge undertaking, and I guess this is a long way to say, I'd love to offer to help with you in that process.
Yeah, actually, in, lack of, lack of ability to offer interpretation is one of the, one of the reasons I stopped doing that, 'cause I was like, I, this is, this just doesn't feel, but anyway, but again, this is the difference between district-supported engagement as a board and, and individual engagement, and both things are valuable.
Right. And I think that's why, I feel like, sorry if I'm repeating myself, but I feel like I wasn't totally, I didn't make my, my point very clearly before, and I think what I'm trying to say is, is getting at to what Director Top was saying about how valuable that kind of community engagement is, and it feels like that is exactly the kind of engagement that we need to do in order to, like, figure out what our vision and values are. And so I'm like, oh, I, I know it's a bigger project, but in the spirit of the, the perfect being, not being the enemy of the good, like, let's just make the calendar right now for that kind of engagement, and have it start, like, in April.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we also, we, I mean, we genuinely cannot say that we as a board are representing the vision and values of community, if there are whole segments of the community that we, that can't communicate with us.
Exactly.
We can't stand up here and say that we're doing that.
I'm trying to, I poorly articulated it before, but that's basically what I'm trying to say. And I'm totally willing to pull my weight in whatever way is helpful too. I, I realize it's a heavy lift for board members to, to tag in, like, on short notice around all this, but I'm, I feel like it's so important that I will make the time, so, yeah.
Feels as though we're coming to a natural conclusion of the meeting. And I hear consensus that, that these, this is a good path to follow, and that there's not a ton of time for goals and guardrails, but there's a lot of opportunity and we're willing to lean into it and do what we need to do. Okay.
I just wanna say that if we get into this and, and you all run out of capacity, we'll flex on our timeline, so that we need to push things back, we can, we can do that. But let's stay ambitious for right now. We're gonna, we'll be responsive, and we'll do what we need to do. We'll, we'll call in extra support if, if need be, but I, I, I want you all to just be absolutely clear-eyed about your capacity too, 'cause if it starts to become too much, we need to back it up a little bit. I don't, I don't want it to be rushed, you all don't want it to be rushed, we wanna make sure we have adequate time to, to do all the things. And so I, I do think we have a little flex in here if, if, if need be, but let's just be in communication about your, your, all, all you all's capacity.
Thank you very much. Going once, going twice. There being no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned at 7:30 on the dot.